Good evening, I'd like to call this December 3rd, 2012 meeting of the Region Board of Education to order. Thank you all for coming. I will take attendance. Valerie. I understand there's a way, she's in New York or something, so she's not here. Tony? Alan? Fran? Greg? Larry? Marty is not here. Michelle, I understand is in the building.
She's in the building.
All right. Emily?
Yep.
I'm here. Kelly? And Michael, he's not here. So we're missing Michael, Michelle, Marty, Alan, Valerie. So we barely have a quorum, we have seven present, five apps.
You mean if one person leaves, we can all go.
We can't vote on anything, but we're still having our meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are a number of items on it. Does anyone want any of the items removed from the consent agenda? All right, then hearing none, then the items on the consent agenda are deemed approved. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to address us? No? Thank you. Next report of the chair. I just wanted to note that I received by email Kim Gallo's Sappage Valley High School newsletter, and I appreciate that and everything contained in it. So thank you for getting that out so timely, Kim. I have nothing else at this time. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Good evening, everyone. The Mexico trip that you approved is right now on hold. The Simply Smiles has gotten some iffy information about the area. So I spoke to the teacher, he made the presentation, and he is going to look into another venue or wait until things calm down. So I just want to let you know that. We do have lice in booth-free school, and we are taking every precaution, but there are parents who are very upset, and as you would well imagine, but I did want to let you know that we did have some lice. We did have a meeting Friday morning on the long-range planning with the selectmen, Board of Finance, Jim, myself, and Tony. We are making some progress. We went over the seven options. We are still in discussion, so I'm not going to go into great details, but it was really a very good meeting. We made some progress, and it was good to get everybody in the same room. Our next meeting is December 28th at 9:00 a.m., and at that point, after that, we'll have more definitive information. But they were asking for some costs of things and some different things going on.
Who were you meeting with?
It was the selectmen.
The first selectmen of all three towns and the chairmen of the Board of Finance of all three towns.
Okay, okay.
And that's it for me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Pat. There's, I wanted to go back to the report of the chair. There was an item that I wanted to just raise. I had received an email from Mr. Deason several weeks ago regarding, you may have recalled, we've had discussion with regard to the vote, the referendum vote on our budget in May. We have been previously asked by the towns, the vote, I think the vote, the polling places are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that's for our budget. It's the only thing that's voted on, and the towns had asked us, gee, you know, we really have to go all day. Could you change the voting hours maybe from, I forget what it was, noon to eight?
Twelve to eight.
Twelve to eight. There was some concern that people who work and are out of town early can use the six o'clock. But the reason Bob had raised it, I believe, is because we would need sufficient time if we wanted to make a change, and it's not on the agenda tonight, but I just mentioned it, if we wanted to make a change, that we need to do it in sufficient time to do it lawfully so that it would be changed by the towns.
It was in my follow-up. They had asked us to shorten the hours back to the twelve to eight. That's under the law to do, and it just stuck in my to-do, and I just brought it back because although we couldn't do it last year, you suggested that perhaps if you were to do it, we'd make sure we had sufficient time, so this is almost six months ahead of time.
Maybe it's something that we could put on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, next.
I know that it's something the towns had asked. It used to be, we used to do it from twelve to eight.
Right, that's the way the statute reads.
And then we made it from 6:00 a.m. again till eight. You know, there are people who have to sit there, and you know, maybe one person an hour comes in in the morning. But we'll get some more information on that, but I did want to raise that, that we should at least consider that, and we may decide to do nothing, but the towns had asked us to look at that. All right. Thank you. Going to item number six on the Agenda Committee reports, communication. Mr. Brown, anything?
Uh, no.
Education. Miss Marty is not here. We do have another education committee meeting on the 17th of this month, December 17th at 7:00 p.m. Education Connection. Valerie is not here, but I did receive, and I'll pass around, a letter from Education Connection, excuse me, outlining the services that Region 12 has received from Education Connection in the past year. It's very interesting, the things that we've taken advantage of, so I'll start it this way, and then if you might want to take a look at that. Facilities? Tony?
Didn't have a chance to, I wasn't able to pull a meeting together last month, but the Mansard roof is essentially done, except for the shingles. Don's looking, they're having trouble, well, you can't match the color of the shingles that are there, and so he's working on getting as close as he can. So that job is, you know, I guess you could almost call it finished. And haven't started the lease program, that's under the regional repairs. That's it for now.
All right. Study, the facility study of this building.
Oh, yes. That, we're still due that number, and the last time we talked to Castle Booze, it should be in here this month.
When you say that number, I assume.
The number, the cost for bringing this up to standard, bringing this building up to standard.
I assume that would include a report, not just a number?
We have the report already, it's in the office to look at. It's essentially very much like the last report that was done in 2004. In fact, the pictures look like, some of them are similar. But in any case, yeah, we do have the report, but we didn't get the numbers. There was a mix-up on their part about, they thought they were going to get paid extra for doing the numbers, and they're not.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Finance?
The site, excuse me, the site feasibility study was done and is available. It's at the office also.
That's for the site. Finance, Valerie's not here, Bob?
We had a meeting earlier tonight, budgets tracking to budget at this point. We went over the status of the 1% account and also the elementary capital repair account. Tony's going to have walkthroughs with that, the status that we've spent at this point. And the last thing on there was the, I got a new rate for electrical generation for the next two-year period, and we have a new generation rate of .0688, and it's going to save $90,000 over the next two years. It was a cooperative effort again with another six districts that we pulled together, and the combination, all of us, was $800,000 savings over a two-year period, so we did okay. And we caught the low end of market. After we did it, the next day it went up, and two days later, the 0688 became 0695, and Torrington took that number, because they were a little bit behind us, but they were part of our group, they just couldn't sign until two days later, and it was already up to 0695, and it's over seven again. So we were lucky, we caught it again.
All right, great, thank you. Alan?
Can I just ask you what the figures are and what's the remainder of the 1% capital account?
1%? As we said here today, Alan, it is, I think this is including everything that was approved and completed at this point, $28,748. $212,585 will be put in there from the current audited report, so it's going to bring the balance back up to $241,333.
And so that's after the end of the?
After June, or June. Right, after that audit's completed and it's accepted, we can put the 212 with what we have in there right now. There's a few items in here that are being investigated as to whether they're going to continue or not, and they revolve around the pool, but we don't have an answer about those. If they turn out to be, use that dollars, the board's going to get a motion to basically free that money back up and put it back in the balance and bring it back up. If you needed it tonight, it was 28,748, and safely you have another 212 for a total of 241.
What's the figure on the elementary capital reserve fund?
Well, that was, we've committed, or you approved the 119.4, okay? It was $400,000 in there, so the difference between the 400 and the 119 is 381, 281.
281.
281.
And can board members get in on the .0688?
That's right.
Well, I'll tell you, if you don't go, at least every two months, go to DPUC and check it out. You're losing out yourself, because you can change it anytime you want. And my only advice is that when you do look at it, don't look necessarily at cheapest per kilowatt, make sure that it's not going to be a variable, and that you give a longer term on it, because you can always change it again. But yes, and mine's at 067, sorry guys. And that happened last February, so come this February, it's changed, I mean, so I'm still looking.
Bob? The numbers you gave us on the 1% account, does that include the payment of the Mansard roof? Is that paid for? Is that accounted for?
It's accounted for, but it's not paid for this one.
That's net of, that's net of the Mansard roof.
Right, exactly.
Anyone else?
Anything that you approved was taken out of that money.
Anything else for Bob? All right, thank you, Bob. Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
We haven't had any meeting, but I did receive information that the Litchfield paper ran an article saying that the Litchfield Board of Education is also looking at the honor roll, number of kids on the honor roll, et cetera, and perhaps they will be, well, they will be reviewing it with an eye on policy, perhaps policy. Nothing?
Okay, thank you. Long range plan? Kelly?
Yes, it's your reason, I was not informed of or invited to the meeting on Friday.
I'm sorry?
It's your reason, I was not informed of or invited to the meeting on Friday.
It was a meeting of, it wasn't that you were not invited, it was a meeting of the selectmen and Jim and myself, and the Board of Finance. So it was not, and Tony came, Tony really just crashed the party, honestly. He was not invited by us. It was just really to get some information from the selectmen and what they wanted us to do to move forward.
Right, and I have in the past asked you to include me on all those memos and all those meeting agendas.
Okay. Point noted.
Again.
Anything else, Kelly? No.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the long-range planning, I know the groups, we all signed up for our different options, and I haven't heard anything, I don't really know what's going on.
Well, this is what happened. The night that we signed up for the groups, and that's the last meeting we've had, the audience members, it was brought up in the audience, that before we should go and research the groups and spend money and move forward, we should get the selectmen together to really talk about what, what the options are and if they are feasible. And so that's where that meeting came from, and then Michael Jackson came to see me, who is the Board of Finance Chair from Washington, and he said that we also should get the selectmen and the Board of Finance people together with me and Jim, and that's what we did. So it wasn't really like, no one else was invited from the board. I mean, Alan, you know, I spoke to Alan, he knew about the meeting, I didn't invite Alan, no one else was invited. It was really just to get everybody on the same page, and they asked at this point for us not to really go out there and, they haven't come to any decisions because they really want a little more information, so that's where we are right now. So because of that, and I believe they are going to cut some of the options, they're going to eliminate some of the options.
Why?
That we put it on hold right now.
I, it just, that doesn't seem to make sense to me, since the majority of the, we had this large public meeting, and we said we'd research, and all we're doing is fact finding, we're not spending any money, we're just looking for information.
Well, you have, the issue is, you have to spend some money to get, the Board of Finance doesn't feel comfortable going forward and talking about any of the options and supporting them or not supporting them if you don't have some real numbers. Okay? So every option, you're going to need some credible numbers, and so they felt that it was important to get some numbers and some architects or engineers involved before we even move forward. So that's what we're doing right now.
To me, it almost seems backwards, though, because it seems like the research that we were going to do ourselves would inform whether to go forward and spend money on architects, because until we look at what, the things that we can ourselves determine, how many classes would there be, how many buses would we, you know, things that don't require design, just looking at the concept, sort of conceptual research.
That, you know, that was my original plan.
Yeah. Well, and I thought that was what everyone understood.
But at the last meeting, you know, everyone agreed, who was there, as far as my recollection, to get the selectmen and to get the Board of Finance people involved before we move forward. So that's what we did.
Kelly?
I think part of this concern, part of the Washington Board of Finance person might be because of some comments I saw that Tony made in the meeting at the Washington Board of Finance meeting about a month or six weeks ago, estimating that the cost of looking into some of these options was going to be about $100,000. So once the head of the Board of Finance in Washington, of which Tony's part, heard that kind of number, I would think that they'd be concerned. However, my hope is that all of this will be done in public, in Board of Ed open meetings, not in closed meetings. If the selectmen or the Board of Finance people want to talk, I think they should come here, I think it's an educational issue, and we should do it in full public view, not have estimates given in private, not have meetings done in private. I think that the only way to do this is to really keep the public involved, because we're going to have to have.
Well, absolutely. I am all for, you know, 100% disclosure, but I think as leaders of their towns, they have a right to ask for more information before we, you know, move forward. They want some more information. So I thought that was a request. Did you give them the information? No, we have to gather the information. Is it something that's going to be brought to the board? Is that on the agenda tonight, or? Of course, of course, it's going to be brought to the board. They're not making any decisions as far as anything other than, they have every right to say, we're not going to support this option, and.
Well, but they're just, they're just, the thing is, half of them were at our long-range planning. I mean, Boards of Finance, Select, and they were all invited to that public meeting. And in the end, they're just one vote like every other taxpayer in these towns, so it seems to me I wouldn't want the small group to undo what the large group did, because they were invited to be a part of that process. And whether they chose to come or not is really not our fault, but somehow they'd taken over what was a Board of Ed process, it seems.
No, absolutely not. This is still a Board of Ed process, and anything they bring to you is going to be as advisory. But they are looking at some of the options and saying, number one, this option is not cost-effective, okay? It doesn't make any sense to do this option. And number two, you know, I mean, they talk honestly when they're together, and they, you know, they talk about, you know, yeah, we want one new elementary school, but no one wants to say where we're going to put it, because I want it in my town, you want it in your town, you want it in your town. So as much as we want it to be an open discussion, and it will be, and it is, I think as leaders of the town, they have every right to have a meeting and be able to be heard, because even though they're just one taxpayer in that town, they are the elected officials of that town, and they have a lot more information than, you know, a normal taxpayer. I mean, the Board of Finance people know the money, they know the situation. So I wouldn't rush, I don't want anybody to think that we're not doing anything under the table, we're not. They just, you know, the suggestion came from that committee, and I followed through with it.
Greg?
I'm perfectly happy to have the selectmen and the Board of Finance think through the options and weigh in and look at that. My only concern is, is that if they said, if the position of the Board of Finance were that they need to have good, solid numbers, or they're not prepared to feel confident in any direction going ahead, the last thing it seems that you want to do is, is you want to commit, the last thing I would think they would want to do is weigh in as to whether an issue is cost-effective before it's studied. So I don't quite understand precisely what they're doing, but I know that they have good faith and they want to move forward, it's a good thing. But here's, if, I keep going back, we hired a consultant in Jonathan Costa, and Mr. Costa said what we will do is we will get, we will get a group together of people who are stakeholders, who are representative, we'll put this group together, they will have sufficient worker bees on it, and they'll be able to come up to a consensus of what are the three issues that we should explore, the three, one of them will be status quo and then three others. Now, Jonathan didn't pick three because he wanted to circumscribe the options available to us. He didn't say we're going to study the status quo because he was just intellectually curious. He's done this before, and he has figured out that the reason you study three is because if you study five, it's almost twice as expensive as studying three. And if you study 10, you're going to kill the project from day one with the cost of the study. So what we did is we started down that path, and we had people that came to meetings for months and months and months and worked through the process and were part of it, and then all of a sudden, some people didn't like it, so they wanted to come and throw a lot of people to come in, so they could have a greater impact, and so that they could have now a study five items, and then that weighs the whole process down, because now we're studying too many options, and to be perfectly frank, there isn't a sufficient difference in some of those options.
Exactly.
And I'm not sure that it's going to cost a lot more to study them simply because there's, there are minor tweaks in some of them, but, you know, if we're going to hire a consultant, we should listen to the consultant, and we should, and if we're going to depart from where the consultant's going, we should ask in public why you picked three, and things like that. We should ask the consultant questions. We shouldn't hire a consultant, promptly disregard what the consultant says, turn it into a complete muddle, and at the end of the day say, oh, well, gee, you know, that got screwed up, why did we bother to hire the consultant? And some people will conclude the consultant led us astray, and the ones who are paying attention will conclude that we didn't listen to the consultant, we let ourselves astray. And therein lies the problem. So that's my concern, is if we're going to hire someone, we ought to listen to them.
Well, we are still, you know, I am still in contact with Jonathan, and Jonathan knew exactly what we were doing. We have not, we have tweaked the options a little bit, because some of them were very similar to the other ones. You know, I, honestly, I don't feel comfortable sharing everything that went on at that meeting, only because the selectmen asked, you know, for them to be able to, they don't like it when I tell things before they have an opportunity to, I guess, tell their constituents or whatever. So we didn't leave the meeting with any decisions. The only thing we decided, and the money that we're talking about is, I said to them that we need money to get these costs for proposals, okay? You can't just say, okay, we're going to hire an architect and an engineer, and they're going to tell us what it costs to totally revamp, or I should say renovate, or one of these schools or one of the other schools, whether we're adding on an addition here, or we're bringing everybody up here, or we're building a new school, or renovating the other schools, that costs money. And that's what we're, I'm asking them for, I'm asking them to pay their share of that cost, so that we can all move forward. And so that's where they're at. They're asking me to see if I can get some kind of estimates, so that they know how much money I'm asking them for. So that's where we're at.
I understand that, but here's the, here's the concern I have, is that, you know, we could want to get, not want to spend the money now, but let me point out to you that if we end up in the year 2022, spending $30 million to educate 600 kids, we ought to just give them a voucher for 50 grand apiece, I think they can probably get a better education somewhere else, if that's the kind of system we're going to have. I mean, you know, I mean, at that point, you're talking about $50,000 a kid, assuming the inflation that marches up to that point, you're going to get somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000 a kid when we're down to 600 kids. So what we really need to do, I think, is we need, anything, if this is advancing the process, I'll hold for it.
It is, it is advancing the process.
That's all I'm going to hear, because.
That's all I can say.
If we're not advancing the process, and all we're doing is spinning our wheels so we can have 10 more years of no decision, then I'm not on board, because frankly, it'll be cheaper to just hand the money to people somewhere else.
At this point, I guess what I'm asking, and both Jim and Tony were there, I think it was a good meeting, I think people were able to talk honestly about what they felt about the options and the future of the region. We need some numbers, we need some numbers. The finance people need some numbers, and they need to make sure that whatever we do is credible, and that's what I'm working on with Don and with Tony, because we have some numbers already from the work that they've done. And so now we just have to tweak that, get the rest of the numbers, see the cost, and I could tell you in January, you know, I'll ask them to come to the meeting, and they can talk to you about our decisions and where we think we're moving forward with Jonathan, because Jonathan's still included, and so is the committee, but, you know, this is where we are right now.
Kelly?
Can you explain to us then the process and methodology that you are rolling out in order to meet their requests and to get the cost estimates that you're talking about?
We are, okay, let's see. I met with Tony and Don to see what we have costed out so far, okay? With the feasibility study that was done, it was before any of this renovation or consolidation or unification began or was in this venue, they started to do work based on the Board of Education for feasibility, for one, to bring this building up to standards, so we have that cost, to see the feasibility of building another building on the site, so we have that cost. And then what we need to do is we need to see if the people who gave us those estimates, those costs, are able to tweak their proposals, or their estimates, or their studies, so that we can make it be, okay, this building, you have the cost to get it to standard, what would it be to add on an elementary wing?
Are these 2005 studies?
No, these are the studies that you, you just did.
They're current.
They're the current studies you just did. So that's what we're doing, we're trying to do that, so that it's not going to be cost, you know, prohibited, and it will be really, we already did some of the work, how can we continue the work we've already done, to just add, so that we can get these credible numbers.
So this is kind of an ad hoc committee?
It's not an ad hoc committee, it's not. It's the leaders of the town, it's the leaders of the town. I don't, you know, I've met with them before. I don't call it a committee, we sit and we talk. The only difference is that, you know, the idea this time came from the other committee. I mean, I can see, you know, the people right there sitting and saying they need to be before we move forward, and the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance piece is that the Board of Finance members who are participating feel very strongly that if they are going to go out and support an option, whatever option it is, that has not been decided, that is, you know, that's going to be decided by the Board of Education after you get all the information and then vote it on if you want to send it to referendum. They want to make sure that whatever we do from this point on is credible so that when they're standing in front of their communities, they can say, yes, these numbers were done by credible architects, engineers, not teachers and parents and that kind of piece. Once we get these numbers, then we go right back to where we were. And then we cost out the things and, you know, we do all that thing and we continue right where we are.
But I don't see why, any of what you've just said, in terms of the process or people involved or methodology or your plans or the meeting that you had on Friday, I don't see why any of that could not be done in open, public forum at a Board of Education meeting. There's a reason that Board of Finance and Selectmen don't run schools. And I don't know why that, all that, the discussion on Friday and all the planning and items that you're talking about can't be done in open forum at a Board of Education committee in full public view.
It will be, except they've asked for, it would be, we would look silly if we stood here and we all started talking and say, well, we can't really move forward till we have these numbers. You know, we have to do some work outside of the Board of Education, you know, venue. And it's not from hiding from anyone, it's just to get things done. You know, you have to, go ahead, Bob.
I agree with Greg, we started a process, we should finish it.
I think the numbers that you're referring to are the structural numbers, the brick and mortar numbers. The operational numbers still have to come from the various committees that are going to say we need four teachers, five teachers, how much does this cost? Can we take this out, put this in? But the number you're talking about is to get somebody to cost out structure, brick and mortar, as opposed to, and in all of those options, there's brick and mortar involved. And I think that's what you were trying to get Selectmen to pay for is to figure out what the brick and mortar for each of these is going to cost. And the committees would work on the operational side, how much do you need remaining? Do we need two nurses, five nurses, do we need six teachers or four teachers? And based on that information, you would then take your assumptions and run those costs out and say it's going to cost you more or less for the operational side, so much for the brick and mortar side. Then you will have an answer. I think that's the number you're trying to drive to.
Absolutely.
And the cost to do it is what an architect slash engineer firm would charge you to determine what a brick and mortar cost is, not to determine your operational cost, the personnel side and how you're going to deliver instruction within the brick and mortar. That still has to be done by those various committees.
Michelle?
I think what, well, that was really helpful, Bob, and I think what I'm struggling with is just the order in which it's happening. Because I feel like the committees, the options that were brought forward and the committees that were going to explore them, we're going to look at the operational and the educational piece, knowing that there was this unknown brick and mortar which we would then have to figure out. But I think the value in doing that first was the fact that there are all of these people involved that don't understand the school system as well as we do. And you and I know that some of those options are not going to save money down the road because we can look at it and say, well, that doesn't save us any administrators or teachers. But they don't really understand that. And so the community, I don't want to jump to the end game and lose the community because we've been down that road before. And so I feel like the exercise was a very useful one in exploring those options, whether they seem, I think some of them don't make much sense at all, but clearly a lot of people did or they wouldn't have risen to the top. So the only way I feel like they will understand that that's not a really viable option is for them to dig into the numbers and look at what it looks like when you put, you know, all of the kids in this building and K-2 and all the different configurations and then narrow the, whatever we're at, seven, down to the recommended three and then spend money for architects. I wouldn't spend money on architects for all seven of those options and many of them are related. But I think the public, for some reason, felt that some of those were some really good ideas and they don't understand why maybe they're not. And I would hate for the Board of Finance to get to just throw them out when we had, you know, room full of what were in that auditorium, it was like 175 people. We rarely get that for anything. So they're going to all feel like their vote and their input was just circumvented and their idea got tossed and they're not really going to understand why except for that somebody's going to say it didn't make sense and they won't have been part of the process to figure out why it didn't make sense.
No?
Wasn't this also partly, less of the strict and academic and financial investigation that we're going to be doing into these options? But wasn't it also a little more surface than that? In that there were ideas that were put forward and were whittled down by weighted voting and it turned into the seven options? And that some of those ideas, though they may have achieved their status as the surviving options, may have been potentially not feasible to a given town. And although you would have members of those given towns on our committee and even though you would have Board of Selectmen from those given towns on our committee, this meeting was kind of, and this is only, I'm just trying to bridge between what came out of our last meeting that Pat's referring to and what apparently this meeting was helped for, was to get a temperature of what the Selectmen and the Boards of Finance would feel would be a possible reception of any of these ideas, either as their understanding of the majority of their townspeople or even of their own personal understanding as the town leaders. So that it wasn't necessarily that these ideas were being given a thumbs up or a thumbs down permanently, but just you were getting an input as to, well, okay, you're going to study this, but let me tell you, this is going to be a tough sell in my town. Or you're going to be studying this and this one could really work in my town. And that's what I was understanding this was, so that it wasn't entirely throwing all of our work, both past and hopefully future, you know, down the toilet, but that it was kind of just taking a quick snapshot of what we're up against with each idea as we, as we begin to really dig into the nuts and bolts of each idea. Am I anywhere near what we're supposed to be doing in this meeting that we didn't come to? Does that make sense, Pat?
Absolutely, it makes sense.
So that it wasn't anything that's going to be either ruled out or float to the top, but just that we would realize, well, look, if we're really going to go for this, this town's going to need to know all of this as we prepare. Or if we're really going to go for this, it's just not going to happen in this town. Or if we really go for this, these two towns are going to love this, you know what I mean? That's kind of what it was. I don't think it was quite the backroom deal making that perhaps it's coming off as if it were.
I mean, I will say that the, there were no decisions made and the only decisions that will be made in this process are by the Board of Education. Kelly said something before that the reason the Selectmen aren't running the schools, they're not running the schools, we're running the schools, but we just listened to what these people had to say. That was it. Greg? I just think that, I mean, it's an interesting exercise, I just think it's grossly premature because you're really looking through a glass darkly until you actually see the options studied with the costs associated with it. You really don't know what your town's going to say, you honestly don't. And the other thing is that it causes, if it causes people to take options and push them to the back of the field, you know, I'm not sure it gets us where we necessarily need to go and I think it may waste some time. But on the other hand, I think it's important at all stages of the process to hear what the political leaders have to say and what they think is the situation. I just think that they shouldn't prejudge because until you study something, you don't know how it's going to go.
Emma?
I think it would be really beneficial to not lose momentum on both fronts. Like I think you need to do a little bit of that, but I don't want to lose the momentum that we were getting there with the small groups. Because everyone's been asking if I've heard anything and I'm like, I'm really sure.
I'm putting something in this week's newsletter to tell them that we're going to get back up in January. Absolutely.
And they want to be doing something.
Absolutely.
In the forward momentum, so I don't want to lose that.
Absolutely.
I do think that the kind of conversation that happened on Friday, from what you're saying, is a valuable conversation. I just think it's unfortunate that it didn't take place here. So the public could watch it on the video, they could ask questions, the Selectmen could be on the record, they could have a good back and forth with the members of the Board. And certainly there's nothing barring them from coming and having that kind of discussion here with us or with you or with the people who have financial numbers. I think that's the main thing I'd like to see is more openness about the entire process. And I think the citizens would too. There's, that would have been a great conversation to have here. The other part of it is missing though, is that when these discussions are being had on a financial or facilities side, I do think that, as Greg intimated, we could end up building a $30 million project or more likely a $50 million project for 600 kids. Maybe fewer if something we do causes fewer people to come here. And then we have to really look at whether that's a viable alternative as well. I'd like to have education, what we want to do with education drive this process. Not drive how much a town is willing to spend or it's, you know, it's like when you go to the car dealer and he says, well, what do you want to spend? How much do you want to spend? Well, it's a little possible, I guess that's kind of possible, but he means, you know, give me a good number and I'll give you that or more. So I don't want to start with the number, I don't want to even start with the vision of the facilities. I want to start with what does education look like? And what does education look like in 10 years? Is it going this way, is it going that way? And until we have those discussions about what we want the education to look like, we're not going to know what we want a classroom to look like, how many classrooms it's going to take, how many buildings it's going to take, where those buildings are located. I mean, we could build a beautiful building and it could cost $50 million. And it might not be right for our purposes or our demographics. So if we don't have a conversation, serious conversation pretty soon about what that education's going to look like, you know, you're going to have drivers that are outside of the realm of what really should be driving these really momentous decisions. So we're going to have, this town's going to have to live it for 20, 30 years.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Next is policy, Michelle?
No negotiations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's nothing to report, we don't have any on John.
Policy met and we have two new policies on our agenda for tonight. We also, I just wanted to let everyone know, I attended a policy seminar at the conference and got a great list of all of the policies that are affected by the new law that just went into place. So we're going to be taking a look at those. And Anne Stowen had some students that needed some data entry work to do, they're a project to work on. And so she had them helping get a database for our policies together so that we can start organizing our work by what's been most recently worked on and when it was last renovated, uh, renovated, when it was last readopted or reevaluated. So anyway, we're looking at, we're moving forward and organizing our work that way.
That's great, thank you. Any questions? All right, school repair, Tony?
Nothing new. We need to get those walkthroughs going.
Okay, technology, Alan?
No, we haven't met, we're only going to meet intermittently as either the administration or the Board requires the administration and the committee to talk. But I'm wondering if it's possible to put Karen on the spot now, since she's in the room, and just let us know a quick update on the network and the wireless.
Well, the wireless is fully installed, it's up and running. The last piece that we're working on now is the, we have set up three separate networks. The one that's active right now is allowing everyone internally here that's in the building to use a guest account that gets them online. But what we want to do is we're configuring a separate piece of that wireless network that will be called the Shapag BYOD, which will allow students and teachers on personal devices to access their documents within our system. So that's sort of the last piece of that that needs to be done. But as of right now, it's been working really well.
Can I ask a question? Is there a reason why every time you come here and you log in, you have to go through a laborious process? And I'm never online anymore as a guest in the system?
You have to accept the, you're talking about the login?
You have to accept it every bloody time you log on.
Yeah, once a day you do it.
Yeah, well, guess what, that doesn't work for me, so we need to do something different. I'm telling you right now, it's a pain in the neck and if it's causing the Board of Ed to go crazy, you need to rethink that. Anyway, it's my personal view on it. I can't get access to stuff I need to read as a result.
Can the, do the teachers and the students have to do that every time?
Once a day, it's actually required that you just log in.
Is there a reason for that?
For every person, okay.
That's generally just the way they're set up.
Yeah, but that's, I don't mean to be.
It accesses your, it's what authenticates you to the network.
Yeah, I understand that, but because that's the way we set it up is not the answer that I like to hear. I like to hear the reason why, is there, if there's not an operational, a real operational reason to do it, then I think we need to have a different system at the very least for people here because I do not have the patience to go on and have to authenticate it every time I log in. Because I'm not here all day long, I'm here for a meeting at night, it's a major pain in the neck. Right now, I can't get on because it won't give me the screen to authenticate.
Yeah, I can't get that either.
I've gotten on for the first time ever.
One happy customer, there we go.
Oh, I've gotten on before, don't get me wrong, but every time you got to do it. I mean, this is, this is not working, that's all I'm saying, it's not working.
I have a question regarding technology, the new website, it's pretty, I like the pictures around there, but I'm so used to the old one and being able to find everything, it's like searching to find teachers' websites. You really have to have a degree now to go through this. I know it'll get easier, but you're going off the old one and it's just, things aren't where they are.
The webmasters, the webmasters just got their training on Thursday, so they're working on the design. And also working on, trying to go through and add more additional information to the sites because a lot of what was up there was old.
Yes.
So you have to give them a little bit of time.
Okay, it's just when you try to go through to get things that you're used to getting and you can't find them. I couldn't even find the staff at one point and then my son's like, it's okay, Mrs. Gambino says they're getting there, Mom. Yes.
Is there any trick to going back without having to go all the way out of the website? Is that just my computer?
Go in.
Well, like if I click on one teacher's website but I want to check the homework for another teacher, I have to go all the way back out and back in? It's on both of our computers, it's not just.
Yeah, I have to check that, I haven't seen that.
It's just that it feels like there should be an easier way.
Anything else?
All right, that's it for tech, thank you.
And I was quiet on transportation.
No old business, onto new business, to consider an appropriate pool of seed hybrid model for teacher administrator evaluation.
Yes, that was in your packet, we talked about that last week at the retreat. And really, again, I'm just asking if you would, someone make a motion to approve that model? And then I will, it's the hybrid seed model for teacher eval and administrative eval. And we can, every year, you have to approve it every year, so we can make changes if need be. But this will get us at least in line with the state and will help us as we start to really roll out the PD. It's going to take a lot of professional development to get everybody up where they need to be. And so that is what I'm asking.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the seed hybrid model for the teachers and administrators for greater values.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Alan?
I just like to say, because we did cover this in retreat, will this, do you want to, and I know I don't want to take our time, but we may have to, do you want to summarize this for the record? Or do you want to attach this to the record, just because this is the public meeting?
We can attach it, but basically what it is is quickly is, under state law, teachers and administrators have to be evaluated based on the new state regulations, which include a percentage model of accountability, 45% based on student scores, half of that being on the state tests, which are now CMTs and CAPS, the other half being on another research-based test, which could be Blue Ribbon, which could be NWEA, we're still working that out. And then 40% on observations of practice and performance. And then 40% on observations of practice and performance, which is administrators going into teachers' rooms and doing the observations and evaluations. 10% on parent feedback, which will be surveys going home to parents, teachers will reflect on that. And then inclusion of either student feedback or the SPI or the, SPI, School Profile Index or District Profile Index, DPI, for administrators. And basically, you, teachers are going to pick goals, they're going to reflect, administrators are going to evaluate them, and then all of this information is going to put into a formula and they will be rated based on the state model. So that's it in a nutshell, but we can also attach it.
Alan?
And then the one thing, just for the record to note, is that all of the evaluations of the one, two, three, four different categories for both teacher and administrative are following the state model.
Yes.
Except for one.
Right.
Do you think you could just delineate how we diverge in the 40% observation of teacher practice and performance from the state model?
Yes. The seed model is right now in a pilot and they have teachers being evaluated six times a year, three formal, three informal, which is very, very difficult and time-consuming. We do not have the staff really to be able to do that in effective way and be able to run schools. So we are moving it to two formal and one informal. Except for teachers who we have concerns about, then we will be doing the six, three and three.
And it's also to be noted that we're not the only school.
No.
With difficulties with it, or perceiving potential difficulties.
Absolutely. There are many school districts who are doing the same thing. The pilot schools are making it very clear that it's really difficult to carry out the model as stated. And we want to do it, you know, we don't want this just to be a to-do thing. We want to do it, a teacher evaluation program to improve teaching and learning. We want to help teachers get better at their craft, we want to help them be more effective in the classroom. And so we want to do it and we want to do it right. So I think this model, and the administrators agree and our committee agrees, is the way to go.
All right, anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the seed hybrid model for teacher and administrator evaluation that's been presented to us in our packet and which will be made part of the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, pass. Thank you. All right, item 8.2, policies for first reading. Michelle, 4131, professional development.
All right, 4131, professional development. So 4131 and supervision and evaluation, the next one, are both coming before us now as, as part of the new seed, you know, in support of the new law that has just gone and has been enacted. So to start with 4131, professional development, and I'm sorry, I know in the past, we usually try to either line it so that you can see what the previous policy was or give you an old copy. And everybody should know that the policies are online, so if you ever want to refer back to a policy or what, how, want to look at how it's changing, you can, you can always look online. We had not updated our professional development policy since 1998. The policy that's before you, it's, it's a Cade model, we went through and, and just adjusted a few of the things that were specific to our district to make sure it was in alignment with, with the district. And our old policy really did not, it just, it basically said that the Board of Education will offer professional development, so it, it wasn't a very in-depth policy. This new staff development policy also is, is written in such a way that it's broad enough or flexible enough that as the things, as the needs change, the people who need to make those changes will be able to without having to come back and have the policy adjusted all the time. So it is flexible. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else.
No, I agree.
So the one that's before us in our packet, 4131, is the policy that's being proposed?
Yes, yes. And the committee, I think we spent two meetings looking at this, making, and making a few changes to it.
Is there a motion to approve it for a first reading?
Motion to approve professional development 4131 for first reading.
Second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving policies 4131 as a first reading of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, passes for a first reading, thank you. Next is 4115, certified personnel evaluation and support.
Yes, this, this is exactly, this is the new, the, well, the seed, well, the seed.
Seed.
This is the seed program that we were just talking about. This is the policy that Cade put together to coincide with seed. We had actually redone our supervision and evaluation policy 4115 in 2010, but it was no longer, it no longer fit with what we were doing. So this policy, yeah, I mean, it's, it's all new because it's the new seed program. And if you have questions about the seed program, you should definitely ask Dr. Costantino about those.
Alan?
I just want to add that you'll notice there's a lot of italics starting at the bottom of the first page and continuing over into the second page. The reason is that these guidelines are set as of now, but they may change because they refer to the program which is still in its pilot form. So as Dr. Costantino mentioned in regards to the seed evaluations that we just voted on, there are still tweaks and changes that are coming to the top based on what the results of the pilot programs are in the 10 pilot schools. So obviously, if this diverges greatly, we'll have to re-revise this. We'll do it again next year. But at least as far as it stands now, we're in compliance with at least as evaluations as determined by the, what's been given to the pilot program.
Correct.
Is there a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion that we, for a first reading policy 4115, supervision and evaluation.
Okay. So policy 4115 has been moved and seconded for a first reading. Is there any further discussion? I have one question. Actually, I don't, I'm sorry, I was looking at the other one. So it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving it for a first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it passes for a first reading, thank you. Item nine, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Just state your name and where you're from.
This is Walker Bridgewater. This is regarding the long-term planning. If we hired a consultant, are we hiring him on an hourly basis? Have you given him a flat fee? How are we paying him?
No, what I wanted to say is, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items is not an opportunity to gauge and debate or to question.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm thinking that.
I'm not editing that, it was a wrong word.
I'm thinking on how we were compensating this man. If we were giving him a flat fee, wouldn't it make sense to have him help and maybe assist the groups that are responsible for restricting the long-range planning?
Well, it's, it's an hourly rate. He gets, he's an, he's an hourly rate and then he has half days at full day. And he is definitely involved and he is leading and helping the groups.
Oh, great.
So, yeah, he's definitely involved.
Okay, great. And is it safe to say that words minutes to the meeting would be for Selectmen and the Board of Finance?
It was not a Board of Education meeting. It was just a meeting of leaders, there were no meetings.
Right, the towns, towns didn't take minutes?
No.
Okay. And one more thing to say? Just that this is an agenda item and this is popcorn and kettle black, but it doesn't seem conducive to our school reputation to have the board take such negative stances against the quality of our school that have been, it's been in the newspaper lately. And I think maybe as, as a board, as a group, you might want to review what's acceptable to say and what's not acceptable to say.
All right, thank you. I do want to say something. Well, I won't say it. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
I want to guess.